Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the September 26, 2023 Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting. If you can, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll go to our agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda this morning.
We got a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same, it passes. All right. I guess we need to recess.
I'll move to recess, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same, passes. All right. I will ask Nancy to come on up. And we have our EDA meeting.
Mr. Chair, we'll first start with the agenda review for the EDA meeting.
All right. And motion for the agenda?
I'll second.
Saying that kind of... Any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same, it passes.
Move the minutes, August 8th. Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. All right. Good morning. Good morning. We're going to have our Public Housing Agency Annual Plan Public Hearing. At this time, Nancy Bolkman, Associate Director of Housing and Economic Development is here with us today. Nancy, would you like to provide comments regarding the plan before we open the public comment portion of the hearing?
Yes. So annually, we do bring you this plan, and it's kind of a comprehensive guide, kind of a high overview of the operations of our programs with our policies and procedures and our strategic initiatives to address housing in our community. We do use a number of tools that you review on an annual basis as well. And some of those tools we have listed there are our payment standards, which help regulate affordable rents, and our utility allowances. In addition to that, we have an administrative plan for our voucher program and an admission and occupancy plan for our public housing. And so we do review those at this meeting as well. And then we do have a number of special vouchers that we use to meet certain needs in our community. And that's those project-based vouchers that we use to leverage new affordable housing units in our community. We work with families on self-sufficiency and considering homeownership. And then we do have special population vouchers for mainstream, for the non-elderly disabled, the VASH vouchers for veterans, the Foster Youth to Independence vouchers for youth, and then we have emergency and stability vouchers for preventing homelessness. And then in addition to that, we do use preferences on our waiting lists to prioritize people in need. And some of those we really wanted to highlight were the governmental action preferences, which really helped us during the pandemic. And it also helped us this year when Pol Road Apartments had a fire and displaced a number of families. We were able to prioritize those families and get them housing right away. And in addition to that, we've addressed homelessness using the move-up preference. So those people that are homeless in our community, that get into emergency housing and transitional housing, rapid rehousing programs, are able to transition to our Housing Choice Voucher Program, opening up those other services for more homeless in our community. So those have been key pieces in our toolbox to address affordable housing. And the other thing I wanted to highlight too was our administrative plan and our occupancy and admission plan. And every year, we do make some revisions to them. This year, we haven't done a lot of revisions because HUD is in major changes in some regulations. They were hoping to have them out already. They started this process in 2016, and so they're now working on implementing them now first. And they're not quite ready. So we didn't do a lot of changes because we know in the next couple of months, we'll be bringing those documents back to you. But right now, we did update them to reflect some of the changes that would be part of our RAD and Section 18 conversion of our public housing. So it addresses some of the needs for that in the plan. It also covers our capital funds. And this year, we did modernize six units, and so those are listed in our memo. And then we always provide you with our five-year plan, which shows that we receive from HUD approximately $225,000 to $230,000 for modernization of our public housing units. So that's part of our plan as well. And then we just wanted to make sure that you understand that in addition to our Housing Choice Voucher and our public housing program, we really want to use this plan to address housing needs in our community. And that's where that housing affordability, affordable housing plan came into play. And some of the action steps we created in that plan are things that we wanted to address in this annual plan as well. So in our plan here, you can see, or the memo, you can see, we tried to go across that spectrum of housing needs in our community and identify the different areas that we've been working on. The first one there shows the, addressing the need for homelessness. And we've done a lot with emphasizing providing housing stability and navigation services for the families that we work with. And that has really helped reduce the number of homeless people in our community. And this past year, actually, the past five years, we've been really working on addressing more homeless issues. And we've increased the number of vouchers used by 33% for those who are homeless in the last five years. So that's a big step in making sure we have homes for everyone in our community. In addition to that, we did add 45 new vouchers for our community. And all 45 of those go towards addressing homeless needs in our community, whether they're disabled or veterans, youth who are working on making sure that they have housing in our community. So those added to our voucher list. And then we always want to highlight our voucher program and our public housing program, showing that they are high-performing programs in our community. And I know two weeks ago, we went to a NARO conference where our state HUD office was there. And they really brought to light the fact that Minnesota is ranked top in the nation for providing occupancy in our public housing and Housing Choice Voucher Programs. And so they probably put a really high standard on us as well. And so it really matches well with Blue Earth County and Mankato in wanting to be those high performers and making an impact in providing affordable housing. Additionally, we wanted to highlight the fact that we have 34 families that are working towards economic self-sufficiency and looking at homeownership. And right now, it's about 39, but we want to get it up to about 75 with the staff that we have. And this past year, we did provide housing homeownership to 33 families. One family was on our Housing Choice Voucher Program, and the others were on the Minnesota Cities Participation Program through Minnesota Housing. And we'd like to see that one get up to 50, but it is all dependent on our economy. We also leverage money from Minnesota Housing for an impact fund, which is a gap financing program, can provide up to $20,000 in down-to-payment assistance for homebuyers. And we also are working with the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership on the Partnership Community Land Trust. And so right now, we have, we're working with trying to house eight homeowners in the Community Land Trust. And with that, three of them would be where they acquired a home in our community, and we can help them with rehabbing that home. And then five of them would be new construction. So right now, we're kind of working with them on seeing some of the first families work through that program. We do have the Community Black Brad funding through Mankato, and that does serve a number of different public service needs in our community, including providing affordable housing opportunities. And this past year, they did leverage funding for Walnut Towers and the construction of Lewis Lofts. And then this year, we also coordinated with different developers to put in applications to the state for the low-income housing tax credit. One of them was that project with Trellis that we brought to you for the shelter and housing piece. And then Tapestry has also come in and put in an application for another 60 units there. Another thing that we've talked about this year was the local Affordable Housing Aid. And that is money coming to cities and counties, and that is something that we're wanting to look at building a housing trust fund. Housing Trust Fund is something HUD would like to see us do as well. So we'll be bringing you more information on the Housing Trust Fund as well. And then we did really want to highlight some of the strong partnerships that we do have in our community. These are just a few of them that we work with on a very regular basis and to do all the work that we do. And then just highlighting some of the things we do regularly, bi-weekly case conferencing, shelter, the Shelter in Supportive Housing Project. We're doing street outreach and navigation for the homeless. We provide housing stability services for those at risk to prevent eviction. We've used the ARP funding for housing, for shelter, for street outreach, weatherization, and rental assistance. We've expanded service to youth with the Foster Youth to Independence and also using that local homeless aid to expand services for youth through the school district who are homeless. And we continue to expand homeownership and education and counseling. And again, I just wanted to highlight that Pol Road fire, and the work we did was to support some of those families. We were able to get them into other housing within two weeks, which was pretty amazing to know that we didn't have to keep them out of housing for very long. And then with our plan, we are required to go and get comments from our participants. So we did invite about 10% of our programs, so around 60 to 80 families, we invited to come and share input on our program services. And so some of the feedback we provided you there, it really reinforced the fact that we should continue to do our RAD, Section 18 blend conversion with our public housing, giving more opportunities to tenants to find housing of their choice. Continue to provide economic opportunities under our Family Self-Sufficiency Program and Homeownership, and maybe even expand some educational information to participants on their ability to use portability and transfer it to other jurisdictions. And then we will continue to build partnerships with our community to stabilize families. So with that, I would take this back to you to following the public hearing to approve the Public Housing Agency Plan.
All right. Thank you, Nancy. At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium. State your name and address for the record, and comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and there is a five-minute limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used up the allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive, are not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing to make comments on the 2024 Public Housing Agency Annual Plan? Is there anyone wishing to make comments on the 2024 Public Housing Agency Annual Plan? And for the last time, is there anyone wishing to make comments in regarding to the 2024 Public Housing Agency Annual Plan? Hearing no comments, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing. Are there any further questions or comments from the board?
I don't have any questions, but thank you very much for all your hard work. Nancy, thanks for your great job.
Did you introduce your helper?
Patriot.
This is Jim Tajie, and he will be presenting information on some improvement projects that will be done.
Thank you.
I'll move approval if there's no questions.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. It passes. That concludes the public hearing. Then we'll go to the capital improvement project for 305 Throne Dog.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, the item before you today is consideration of bids on capital improvement project 11067, the renovation of 305 Trundle Street in Mapleton. The project was advertised for public bidding on August 11th. Bids were opened on September 1st. One contractor submitted bids, and all documentation was submitted within the allowable time, resulting in the bid conforming fully to the bidding requirements. Web Construction Incorporated of Mankato submitted the apparent low bid in the amount of $137,925. The contract carries a substantial completion date of January 31st, 2024. Due to the single submitted bid, staff did reach out to the HUD Office of Procurement for an opinion on the awarding of a non-competitive bid. Because the project was publicly bid, with several contractors attending the pre-bid meeting onsite in Mapleton, in addition to the single bid coming in well below the architect's estimate of $185,660, HUD did formally concur with staff with the ability to move forward with awarding this bid. Staff recommends awarding the bid in the amount of $137,925 to Web Construction Incorporated of Mankato, Minnesota. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much.
I'll move the resolution. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Good bid.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes. Now to 302 Lincoln Street.
The item before you today is the feasibility report for the public housing unit located at 302 Lincoln Street in Mapleton. The property experienced a fire in June of 2023. Luckily, all occupants were able to make it out of the house safely. However, extensive damage was done to the kitchen, as well as water and smoke damage throughout the unit. Staff was able to accommodate the tenant's move to another unit within our protocol area. Earlier this year, the executive director authorized staff to enter into a professional services agreement with Olson and Hobby Architects of Mankato to assist with creating a feasibility report, which is in front of you today, including a preliminary cost estimate. Work will include repairs and installation of interior finishes, an updated kitchen, bathroom improvements, interior doors, and exterior improvements, including windows, deck replacement, landscaping, and roof repairs due to the fire. The total estimated cost of the improvements is $207,550. The architect has been working with our insurance consultant with respect to the damage claim, which they're only covering a portion of the damage. But with the RAD conversion ongoing right now, we've decided to take the unit down for modernization. So as of right now, the insurance is going to cover $74,650 in insurance proceeds, with the capital fund covering the rest of the, the cost of the improvements. Staff recommends the authority accept the feasibility report, order the improvement, authorize the executive director to prepare final plans and specifications, and instruct the executive director to advertise for bids in accordance with the requirement of law. This concludes staff's report.
I'll move approval of the recommendation.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just have a question that might lead into two. So if the bids come back favorably, how does that affect the insurance premium? There might not be a question you can answer.
Sure, so the insurance, we have it separated out into essentially two line items. The stuff that the insurance will cover and the stuff that they don't. So the bids will be reflected, and the insurance proceeds will be reflected.
Okay. And then was there a reason why it was only that much?
So essentially, we decided to take the unit down for modernization. So if there was carpet in the unit, insurance will only pay for carpet, which we're upgrading to a linoleum product, so.
Thank you, sir.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. It passes. So we can adjourn this meeting. Need a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we will start up with our county commissioner meeting, and we're going to be talking about homeless prevention aid agreement. Nancy.
Yes, and with that agreement, you had reviewed that last month. And so we're bringing it back to you. So this again is the Local Homeless Prevention Aid that we are coordinating the funds with the school district and MVAC, you know, homework starts with home type of a program to administer. We did bring you the agreement, and when we took it to the city for approval, they did review the agreement and took out all of the items that related to federal funding, which do not apply to this program anymore. And so we're bringing it back to you without the federal guidelines in the agreement. Do you have anything else that you would add to that?
No, I think that's sufficient.
So nothing in the administration of the program or anything has changed, it's just the federal implications were taken off.
Okay.
I would move approval of the updated homeless prevention aid agreement.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you, Nancy. All right. And Ryan? We have Mr. Ryan Hiddaker up here to talk to us about County Ditch 26.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning, welcome everyone to this public hearing for the proposed repairs to County Ditch 26. At this time, I will ask Brian Hiddaker to read the jurisdictional documents for this hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll start with the memo. Blue Earth County Ditch 26 is primarily located in McPherson Township. The proposed repair work for portions of this public drainage system include tree removal and brush removal, which is required in the 103E Minnesota Drainage Code as part of the 2019 redetermination of benefits proceeding. Minnesota Drainage Code Statute 103E.021 requires permanent strips of perennial vegetation that shall be 16.5 feet width, and as so is not to impede future maintenance or inspections. The proposed repair work primarily affects the outlet portion of County Ditch 26 as proposed in the provided repair report. At today's meeting in the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, we are asking the Drainage Authority to consider the approval of the drafted or subsequently amended findings in order in order for final engineered plans and drawings to be prepared and made available for bidding. Hearing notice was mailed to landowners on September 13th, also posted in the Mankato Free Press on the 13th and outside of our courthouse building here. That's all I have.
I'll move to accept the jurisdictional documents and legal record. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. It passes. We now need the repair report from ISG. If you could give your names and, for us too.
Absolutely.
I'm used to seeing Chuck up here.
I know, you got the B team today, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
I'd agree with that.
Well, good morning. My name is Mark Orger. I'm a civil engineer with ISG filling in for Chuck today. I have Jacob Neeler with me. He's done the majority of work on the project, so I'll let him talk through most of our presentation that we have here today. As Ryan mentioned, we are talking about County Ditch 26, and more specifically, the outlet portion of repairs of the system. But I will let Jacob talk through kind of what he's worked on and present the project to you.
Sounds good. Thanks, Mark. So this project has had several landowner meetings up to this point, as well as the hearing back in June discussing potential abandonment of the system. At this point in the process, we're looking for approval for the repairs to the system, the proposed repairs to the system. Upon approval, contractual documents would be developed, and it would be publicly bid to complete the proposed repairs. Looking a little bit into the existing conditions and capacities of the area of County Ditch 26 we're going to be looking at, all in all, the system primarily lies within McPherson and La Ray Townships, including County Ditch 26 and its two upstream watersheds. It drains a little over 7,000 acres, which is predominantly row crop. System was developed back in, or established back in 1911. Since that time, there's been several improvements. In 1967, a tile branch was converted to an open ditch. Later, in 1975, the outlet of the ditch was extended, deepened, and widened. And then most recently, in 2020, repairs were completed. At that time, a large stretch of ditch was cleaned, and several alternative side intakes were installed. So a brief look into the system, you see in the red outline is the boundary for the CD 26 watershed. To the north, you can see the JD 22 watershed, which drains into it. Lower on the east portion, that purple boundary represents the CD 83 watershed, which drains right into CD 26, just north of the project area. Looking into those 2020 repairs I just mentioned, at that time, 5,900 linear feet of ditch was cleaned. At that time, 17 side intakes were installed. Those are mainly just to reduce overbank erosion and enhance stability. So looking into the area that we're going to be discussing today, it's, there's a lot of woody vegetation at that location. Woody vegetation is... Woody vegetation is not desirable along the banks of the ditch for several reasons. For starters, it reduces capacity in major flooding events, and secondly, it reduces side slope stability, in that it reduces the ability for perennial grassy vegetation to establish in those banks. And finally, it reduces accessibility to maintain the system. With that, amounts of sediment were discovered in this area of the system, over one foot, which reduces capacity for upstream waters. With that in mind, we can start looking at our proposed repair. A few things we look for in a repair, the first being we maintain the originally constructed ditch grade geometry. What that means is we don't propose any change to the drainage coefficient or the capacity of the system, and on top of that, then there's no change to the adequacy of the outlet. With all these in mind of standard repair, which just consists of tree clearing, maintaining side slopes, we can look into alternative BMPs or best management practices. Things pertinent to a project like this would be alternative side intakes, like the ones I previously mentioned, which would just kind of help enhance stability. So here in the picture, you can see kind of the proposed repair plan. This would mostly involve tree grubbing, clearing, restoring these side slopes to the original constructed condition, establishing grass banks, establishing a buffer to maintain the system, and then establishing those side intakes. Back in June, we had a hearing here to discuss petition for an abandonment of this portion of the system. At that time, we determined that this portion of the system still serves a substantial purpose, and therefore could not be abandoned under statute. Looking a bit into project cost, we see that on the top, the majority of this project cost would be coming in the form of tree removal. The total, the project in total is estimated to be about three hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and thirty of that is proposed to be tree removal. Other portions, such as tile outlet repair, you know, repairing tile outlets found in the area, side slope repair, ditch cleaning, reseeding these areas after the fact, make up the remainder. With that, I'll hand it off to Mark to go over some of the construction practices. Thank you.
Thanks, Jacob. Just going quickly through some of the construction things that you see on site. So, you know, we looked at the project cost, and in total, we're over that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar threshold. However, we may be able to divide the project into a couple different portions, perhaps split out the tree clearing as a bid, and may not meet that requirement for public bidding. However, if we do go for the public bids, we do have a list of requirements that we need to meet, just to have a good contractor on board. So the list of subcontractors, the state responsible contractor form, list of equipment and project references, and then a bid bond. And so a couple examples of what it'll look like, so again, looking at that statutory requirement of that buffer loss, what we would do is put in that six and a half foot buffer, and just clean the trees along that buffer strip for access, reseed those areas with native perennial vegetation, and allow access for future maintenance along that corridor. Jacob talked about the open ditch cleaning, so again, we're looking at cleaning sediment deposits in areas we may need to reshape some of the slides that have come off those ditch banks, but if not, we're just going to try to focus on dipping out the bottom to keep those banks on the side slopes stable. And then again, if we find any tile outlets that come in, we will pull those out, replace them, and put in a new pipe on the outlet in the open ditch, and put riprap around it just so that it's protected. If there's areas that we find where there's going to be washouts that need to be fixed, again, we've got a lot of canopy cover with the trees right there now, there might be some gully erosions coming into the open channel, we'll put in one of these alternative side intakes that kind of reshapes that bank, and then we use this inlet device shown on the right here to capture that overland flow, drop it in, in a conveyed route, and into the bottom of the open channel, just helps with the extra bank stability. And then this is just kind of a diagram showing what that would look like, again, trying to capture some of that surface roll coming in, surface flow coming to the open channel. We talked about the damages a little bit, you know, we do have that six and a half foot buffer strip easement. If there's any damages outside that, we'll look at temporary damages just for construction access and clearing and grubbing and pulling things out of there. So that's kind of what we have for you today. We looked at the need for repair with some of the sediment deposits, the trees that are blocking some of the flow, and obviously in the buffer area, looking at cost effective projects, and we do recommend approval for this. And then the next phase would be to put together plans and specs for bidding, either a whole lump sum practice or project, or maybe just doing the trees first, and then come back and evaluate what needs to be in the second bidding phase. So with that, you can take any questions from the board.
Any questions?
No questions.
Good report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and there's a five-minute time limit. County administrator will give you one-minute warning, let you know when you've used your allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relative to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing to make comments on County Ditch Twenty-Six? Anyone wishing to make comments on County Ditch Twenty-Six? And for the last time, is there anyone wishing to make comments on County Ditch Twenty-Six? I will close the public comment portion and bring this back to the board.
I'll move approval of the staff recommendation.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Accept this drafted findings in order in approving the provided engineering repair report, ordering the engineer to prepare for the necessary detailed plans and documents for the bidding of this repair. Is there any other discussion? Yes.
Now, maybe pertinent to this, but it is, I mean, with this heavy vegetation and extremely high cost, the tree removal, I think that just shows how important it is we keep maintenance of all of our hundred and eight ditches in the system, so we don't get to this point to make a, you know, I mean, it gets to be pretty heavy, it gets to be pretty spilly.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
To follow along that, it creates issues because people like those trees there, and it's, you know, you go in and remove them, it just causes other challenges, which was impressive that they summarized this ditch into fifteen minutes or so, because we spent many hours talking about this very issue. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same? That passes. All right. We will now go to County Ditch One, bid award.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick bid award memo here. As part of the approved repair report from July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, repair hearing for County Ditch One, public bidding for these repairs was made available. On September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, eight contractors submitted bids for the repair work. Leland Drainage and Excavating submitted the lowest bid, excuse me, lowest base bid of two hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars, with an engineer's estimate calculated at two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, excuse me, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, sixty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. ISG in Blue Earth County have worked with Leland Drainage and Excavating on past projects with a similar scope of work, with very positive results. ISG recommends awarding the project to Leland Drainage and Excavating. Today, we are requesting the Drainage Authority to award the bid repair to Leland Drainage and Excavating in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars for the approved repairs for County Ditch One.
So move.
Second. Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? That passes. Go ahead, Ryan.
All right. My final item for you is a change order for County Ditch Thirty-Five. Construction work for the approved improvements in repairs for portions of County Ditch Thirty-Five had begun. As part of the repair work for portions of County Ditch Thirty-Five lateral B, the originally approved construction plans and bid tabulations called for the installation of a new twelve-inch line for lateral B. The awarded contractor for bid package number two, Vorniki Construction, has installed portions of the new twelve-inch tile line, including a new boring, under Minnesota Highway Twenty-Two. While the contractor was doing tile investigation on the east side of Highway Twenty-Two, the original lateral B was discovered with a size of fourteen-inch and sixteen-inch concrete tile. Construction has been stopped on lateral B since the discovery of incorrect tile sizes. The proposed change order will allow the contractor to install the correct tile sizes and boring. As part of the change order for this lateral B, ISG engineers have included a memo to go along with the change order. The attached memo gives a background of the specifics of this current lateral B sizing situation, and explains their agreement to remedy the situation from both the construction aspect, as well as the financial aspect. Today, we request the Drainage Authority approve the submitted change order correcting the tile size. We are also asking for the consideration of the approval for the proposed ISG memo agreement, which is included.
So is that two, two different?
There'd be two separate actions there, sir.
Two separate actions. Bring that to the board.
I'll move approval of the change order.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same? That passes. And for the second?
The agreement, yep.
The agreement, the memo. I would approve, make a motion to approve the agreement between ISG.
Second.
Could you read what that agreement would be?
Summarize it.
You want me to summarize something? So, the agreement, we had some discussions in the background of costs. After sitting down with various members from ISG and our staff here, the agreement proposed by ISG is to, there will be a reduction of their staff time or their staff costs reflected on our invoices to cover that already incorrect installed tile size. That was an agreement made between Blue Earth County staff and ISG to cover that whole eighty-two-thousand-some-dollar cost.
Mr. Chair, I might jump in here and just say that, you know, it was recognized that there was an error in calculating or estimating the size of that tile. We appreciate ISG's willingness to not shift that change order cost to the landowners on the ditch system, but recognizing that we need to hold them harmless, and so that's the agreement, is there'll be a credit back to the county, which will ultimately eliminate the cost to the landowners on that ditch system.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same? And that passes. Thank you very much. Thanks for the explanation.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we got planning and zoning.
Good morning, John.
Good morning, John.
Oh, and Dan you got today, too.
Morning.
Morning, Dan.
How are we this morning?
Doing well, thank you.
There you go.
How about yourself?
Good. The next item on the agenda is planning and zoning. Planning and zoning staff are here to present their action items. These are public hearings. Public comments will be allowed in just a moment. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. And please note that this meeting is being recorded, and there is a five-minute time limit, and the county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used the allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to persons who remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. I'll ask the planning and zoning staff to please introduce themselves for the record, and introduce the first item before the board. Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Concenine, property and land supervisor. Our first item here this morning is PC twenty-three dash twenty-three. It's a request for review and approval of an interim use permit by John and Catherine Kaliski to operate a sawmill and associated uses as a level-two home occupation in the agricultural district. Property is located in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section Nineteen in Decoria Township. The property has a location address of five, six, eight, one, five, one hundred and seventy-eighth Lane, Good Thunder, Minnesota, five, six, zero, three, seven. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the report. The applicants were present and available for questions, and there was no public comment. The planning commission had no questions or concerns regarding the proposal, and following the discussion, the planning commission, by roll call vote, voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. The board action this morning for this item would be passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open, open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment regarding PC twenty-three, twenty-three, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and is there anyone wishing to speak to PC twenty-three, twenty-three? Is there anyone wishing to speak and comment on PC twenty-three, twenty-three? And for the last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC twenty-three, twenty-three? If not, we'll close the public comment portion. Is there any comments from the board? No, sir. If not, is there a motion to approve the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same? Motion carries. Would staff please introduce the next item? I think it's PC twenty-four, twenty-three.
Correct, Mr. Chair. PC twenty-four dash twenty-three is a request for review and approval of a request to vacate a utility easement lying between lots fourteen and fifteen of Terrace View subdivision by Lee and Christine Boer. Property is zoned rural townsite and located within the urban fringe overlay district in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section Four in Decoria Township. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the report. Representative of the applicants was present and available for questions, and there was no public comment. The planning commission had no questions or concerns regarding the proposal, and following discussion, the planning commission, by roll call vote, voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. And the board action this morning would be passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment regarding PC twenty-four, twenty-three, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. If anyone is wishing to speak regarding PC twenty-four, twenty-three, please come to the podium. And the last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC twenty-four, twenty-three? If not, we will close the public comment portion. Any comments from the board? Nope. I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move approval with the planning and zoning's recommendation.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second? Any, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same? And that passes. The next is PC twenty-six, twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. PC twenty-six dash twenty-three is a request for review and approval by Blue Earth County of an interim ordinance to prohibit the operation of cannabis businesses within Blue Earth County. The interim ordinance establishes a moratorium prohibiting the establishment of a business operating under the State of Minnesota Statute, Chapter Sixty-three, until January one, two thousand and twenty-five. The moratorium will allow the county to study adoption of reasonable restrictions on the time, place, and manner of operation of a cannabis business in order to protect the planning process and the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the report. Planning commission members asked for clarification on the need for the study. Staff stated the moratorium will allow flexibility to make changes to the ordinance based on the outcome of the upcoming- the outcome of the upcoming legislative session. Some of the existing language in the law is somewhat ambiguous regarding how the cooperation between municipalities and counties work. The planning commission members further discussed the role of the Office of Cannabis Management, or OCM, and how they will work with local jurisdictions. Staff relayed that the current understanding of the legislation would direct counties to make cannabis sales a permitted use with standards that would still need to be developed. There was no public comment at the PC meeting, and following discussion, the planning commission by roll call vote voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the county board based on the findings recommended by staff. And the board action this morning for this item would be passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. This time we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment regarding PC 26-23, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. If there's anyone wishing to speak to PC 26-23, please come to the podium. And for the last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 26-23, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. If not, we will close the public comment portion. Any comments from the board? Nope. And I will ask for a motion?
I'll move approval of recommended, recommended changes of the planning commission.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
I think it was summarized in the minutes, but we had quite a bit of discussion at the planning and zoning meeting about the why and why nots, but at this point, staff is confident that we need to do this, and I think we did too as a planning commission, just to wait till things are squared away.
I might have, whatever legislation, I could, had a good job at a decipher through it all, and then we'll see how it, you know, it's a new world out there.
All right? Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same, and that passes. 27-23.
Good morning, commissioners. I'll introduce myself for the record, Dane Lynch, property and environmental resources, wetland specialist. And today, PC 27-23 is a request for Brian and Ashley Lindy. They're requesting approval of an after-the-fact interim use permit to allow for the placement of fill in excess of 50 cubic yards in the shoreline area of Minneopa Creek. Approximate fill amounts placed on the site will be 800 cubic yards. The site is located within the shoreline area of Minneopa Creek, a tributary stream as classified by the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. The property is zoned as conservation, and the project address is 20112-523rd Avenue, Lake Crystal, Minnesota. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the report. The applicants were present and available for questions. There was no public comment. The planning commission had no questions or concerns regarding the proposal. Following the discussion, the planning commission by a roll call vote voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. Board action for the request today is passage of the resolution based on the recommendations of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. This time we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment regarding PC 27-23, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak to PC 27-23? Is there anyone wishing to speak to PC 27-23? And for the last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 27-23? If not, we'll close the public comment portion. Are there any comments from the board? Explain the after-the-fact interim use.
So, these applicants started this project without a permit. So, within the shoreline impact zone and shoreline area of Minneopa Creek, it's highly regulated on the amount of fill placed in the area. The property and environmental resources department discovered the fill and made contact with the applicant and the contractor to stop the work. And at that time, we have been going through the permitting process now to rectify the situation after the fact.
All right. So I'm asking for a motion from the board?
So moved.
I got a motion and a second, any comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. Thank you very much.
You.
And this, this concludes the planning and zoning items.
How are you doing?
Would you like to have a break?
No, okay. Never mind. Talk about one other item of planning if anybody else has it.
All right, then we will jump to our One Watershed, One Plan. Scott?
Good morning. Scott Salisbury, property and environmental resources. The first item that we have on the agenda is the adoption of the La Sure River Comprehensive Water Management Plan. The plan itself will replace the portion of the county water management plan for the La Sure watershed in Blue Earth County. A partnership was created back in 2020 to adopt and implement the watershed management plan. It was really a collaboration between the Blue Earth County, Faribault, Freeborn, and Wasika County, as well as the SWCDs in those counties. The plan itself was coordinated by ISG and also involved MSU Mankato, the Water Resources Center, and the Freshwater Society for the Public Input. Public input really included online surveys as well as two public meetings. There was a steering committee and a technical advisory committee as well as a staff committee. The plan itself had a 60-day public review back in December of 2022. In Blue Earth County, there are several different priorities that are important to the county. Two, two lakes are priority lakes in the watershed, it'll be Lura and Madison Lake. There's also priority watersheds around the St. Clair area and then the lower Cobb River. Groundwater protections, another key item that's in the plan. Public hearing on the plan was held in Pemberton back in March of 2023. And then in April of 2023, the Policy Committee for the One Watershed, One Plan Group forwarded to the Board of Water and Soil Resources for their state agency review, and the Board of Water and Soil Resources approved the plan on August 24th of 2023. And the final step in the planning process is for each local jurisdiction within the watershed to adopt the plan. And the requested board action is a resolution to adopt the La Sure River Comprehensive Watershed Plan.
All right. Do we have a motion for a resolution to adopt the?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
I would just add, Mr. Chair, from our first policy committee meeting on March 8th, 2021, to our 25th meeting last Friday, just with policy committee and recognizing and appreciating staff sitting on the advisory and technical committee with their monthly meetings over the last time, there's been a lot of blood, sweat, and maybe even tears sometimes on this process. It was, it was democracy at work, where we talked about a joint powers agreement versus a coalition and things like that, but we got through it all. It took longer than maybe should've, in my opinion, but would urge that we adopt this plan, got it right.
But you're saying there was a lot of work behind this.
There was a lot of work, there was a lot of hours of, of, of working together. As we all know, watersheds don't respect jurisdictional boundaries, and when you get multiple counties involved in agencies and things like that, but this is a good plan and look forward to actually getting to do something now besides just talking about it. So implementation, I suspect, will be much more fun than the planning process.
Hope so, yes.
Hope is not a strategy, Scott. Appreciate your.
Any, any more discussion?
As I was saying, I appreciate Kevin's involvement. I remember the beginnings of it.
We're, we're blessed to have Kevin on there because he doesn't, and, you know, he understands, he's probably more than most of us do just because he works with the daily on his farm, so we appreciate that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same, and that passes. Go ahead, Scott.
Okay, the next step in the process is really the implementation process and the governments, governance process that Commissioner Papp mentioned. As you mentioned, there's a lot of discussion on the structure moving forward, and some watersheds, like the Wat'wan watershed, chose to use existing entities. They chose the Greater Blue Earth River Basin Alliance, whereas this committee chose to go with a joint powers collaboration, which really the structure utilizes the existing staff and existing boards to implement the plan. So it's very similar to the planning process where the key parts in the plan will come back to the Blue Earth County Board for approval. There is a policy advisory committee that Commissioner Papp served on, and that'll serve, you know, as to make recommendations, very similar to the plan, but make recommendations on adoption of whether it's budgets, implementation strategies, et cetera. So, the, under that agreement, each, each, you know, governing board will have the power to vote to approve, you know, things like bylaws, amendments to the agreement, the actual budgets, the fiscal agent sub-agreement, as well as amendments to the plan. And there'll be one member from each governing board that will be on that policy advisory committee. There'll also be, you know, staff, and in this case, the committee is called the La Sure Implementation Team. There'll be a technical advisory committee as well. The initial joint powers agreement that we're asking for approval of, it designates Wasika County as the plan coordinator, and the Wasika County Soil and Water Conservation would be the fiscal agent. So, the two items that we have before you would be the joint powers agreement and the policy advisory committee bylaws for the La Sure River Collaboration Agreement. And both of those are attached.
Can we vote on those two together, or do they need to be separate?
I believe you could do that in one motion, Mr. Chair.
I will make that motion. I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Kevin stated it very well with the last one, that there's already been a lot of time spent on this.
And I would, I would just add that, that the policy committee recommended, because we've got four counties involved, eight different agencies, that instead of bringing you something one month and then coming back, you know, with the, with the bylaws, that we wait till all three documents are ready and all three can go before those boards. I believe we are the last of the eight to approve it, so with our approval, it's kind of pre-alike.
Mr. Chair, I might jump in here and just mention that this is a little bit of a different joint powers agreement, so it is a collaboration, which means more items will come back to this body for approval, as well as the other partners needing to do individual approvals of items that, you know, typically we've seen the joint powers board approve items and not come back to the individual partner board, so that'll be a little bit different. And we'll see how it plays out. I probably wasn't the biggest fan of this collaboration model, but we'll see how it goes. I apologize, we could've not been the last county approving this had I not been in kind of scramble mode at the last meeting, so I did delay this, so my apologies to our partner counties.
I'm sure it'll be fine. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. Thank you very much. And now we're going to have?
One last.
One plan.
Yeah, one last watershed item is the Blue Earth River One Watershed, One Plan process. So that process is just, you know, in the starting stages here. Back in May of this year, the Blue Earth County Board passed a resolution to support the watershed plan moving forward. A grant application was made to the Board of Waters and Soil Resources for planning for the Blue Earth River watershed. On August 24th, Board of Water and Soil Resources approved the grant to create the Blue Earth River watershed plan. That planning effort will include the counties and soil and water conservation districts of Blue Earth, Faribault, Freeborn, Jackson, and Martin Counties. The city of Fairmont has also opted into the planning process, so a little different that we'll have a city involved. Their drinking water supply is in the Fairmont chain of lakes or influenced by that, so they want to be an active participant in the planning process. Martin County Soil and Water Conservation District is going to serve as the fiscal agent for the process, and Faribault County Soil and Water Conservation District will be serving as the grant administrator. A memorandum of agreement for the watershed planning effort has been drafted and reviewed by the organizations. The agreement was based on the Board of Water and Soil Resources template and is attached. After the planning agreement would be signed by each organization, a work plan template or timeline and budget would be done. And it's really expected late fall of this year that planning in the Blue Earth River watershed would get started. So the board, requested board action is approval of the memorandum agreement to implement the Blue Earth River watershed plan, and that agreement is attached.
Looking for a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I think it's important to recognize, in this one, we've got the planning process, and then there'll be implementation. As this memo indicated, in this particular watershed, Cotwood and Wat'wan counties have opted out of the planning process. They're not going to be involved with that. Similarly, the La Sure River that we just talked about, La Sure County opted out of the planning process. But just because you opt out of the planning process doesn't mean once the plan is in effect, in approved, and it becomes implementation, you still can be part of that. So, you know, we've opt, we opted out of Cotwood's here a few months ago and things like that as far as the planning process, but yet the portions of the county in that watershed would still be able to opt in for the implementation. Correct, Scott?
Yes, definitely correct and well stated.
I noticed, and this watershed actually reaches down into Iowa, correct?
Correct, yep.
Does, does the Iowa counties have anything to do with what we're doing?
That's a very good question. The, the planning process really is dictated by the state, so.
Right.
I'm not sure if there will be any involvement with Iowa. Obviously, the watershed modeling would take into account the water, whether it's flow or potential pollutants that will be coming from Iowa, but I guess that remains to be seen how, how it affects Iowa.
You know, the, the one county has a very, very big portion of.
Correct.
The watershed. So that's, that's, that's always, obviously, you know, not only do we stretch from different counties, but we stretch from different states. And of course, state law is so much different, you know, so, but thank you very much. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Scott.
All right.
Mark?
Hi, Mark, how are you?
How are you?
Oh, wonderful. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mark Mandelfeld, property and environmental resources. Our department is here today to request approval of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to exec, execute a real estate purchase to acquire land adjacent to the Pondrosa landfill. The land in question is approximately 8.3 acres that would lie west, northwest of CASA 34, or directly south of the customer service building located of at the landfill. The resolution delegates the authority to the county administrator to negotiate and execute a real estate purchase agreement in the amount of 57,700 plus any reasonable fees. As we continue to, to work with the property owners and hopefully pursue a closing, we've ran into or discovered some concerns related to the transaction, and those concerns may delay or prohibit us from purchasing the land. But we're hopeful that we can work with those property owners to alleviate or remedy those concerns and then still proceed. The purchase agreement does, is in effect through the end of the year, which allows us some time, but originally we had proposed a closing date of later this week because the landowners go south for the winter. So, to be determined if we can remedy those concerns and then actually even forward with the closing here, but we'll work with county administrator in that regard. The requested action again would be to approve the resolution and grant. The requested action again would be to approve the resolution and grant the authority here to proceed.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
We talked about this somewhere along line, planning or work session or something, so we've talked about it. I think this would be a good piece of property to have next to the landfill.
Well, it's just, uh, just feels right to have it there and I think that's a good resolution. I know the, I've talked to the administration about the issues and I'm sure something can be worked on. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose the same? That passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Sheriff Orson?
Morning, Sheriff.
Good morning.
Morning. The first item is the Drug Task Force Joint Powers Agreement. There's no change to the content of this agreement. I cleaned it up five or six years ago and it was reviewed by Pat McDermott. This is just a fresh signature page that Commander Rush is required to get as part of the new grant cycle. And historically, we've always had the sheriff's signature on it and the county board chair.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
It's just a great program.
And second?
Something that you know very well.
Yeah. Correct. Yep.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And oppose the same? That passes. Go ahead.
Okay, the second, Mr. Chair, is the fiduciary agreement. Years ago, task forces could collaborate together and seize federal assets and that could be used by the task force. The federal government, for some reason, changed that law years ago and one of the agencies within the task force has to take over as the fiduciary holder of any money seized. So technically, any money seized by the task force, even if it's in a different county, is held by Blue Earth County and the agreement just needs to be updated per the federal government. And that, again, sheriff's signature, county board's signature.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Thank you very much.
Thank you, and if Jesse could send those to Chad when they're done?
Either taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
See you at lunch.
Good day.
All right.
Bill's got to be done in two minutes, too.
Yeah, Phil. Come on up, Phil.
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep you the same time limit that the sheriff was on.
That's right. Morning, Bill.
Morning.
Good morning, y'all.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, some action items. To start with, Mental Health Center being the first section with two items. Genoa is an organization that actually runs our pharmacy, but they also do third-party employer and in psychiatric care, that's, you know, kind of a tough arena to be in, especially in our workforce as it is now. So we're looking to use them more fully and this particular timing of this one is that we have had one resignation of a advanced practice nurse and we have a pending retirement as well with a contracted employee. So we would like to enter into an agreement with Genoa and pursue candidates. We don't have anyone picked out at this point, but one of the differences, the why, is that they will do the recruitment, whereas in our current provider, we are left to do the recruitment and we don't have great pathways to do that. And so they know how to do that and we're, part of our impetus to make this change. Their psychiatric services are $250 an hour. Advanced practice nurse, dotler, I wish, $140 an hour. And then the package includes wages, benefits, insurance, and overhead. Max for the contract is up to 38,4,000 annually and there are two out clauses depending on what presents, 30-day and 60-days, so that gives us some assurance if this isn't working out that we can, again, go back to the drawing board. The effective date would be as soon as it's approved by the board and then five years after the effective date would be the term of this contract. The second item under Mental Health Center is FMAP funding for Blue Earth County Mental Health Center. This is a grant award to our initiative, our town county initiative, to help with navigation and patient seating in our clinic, so these funds allow us to buy some furniture and other pieces of workflow equipment that will help us mainly in the lobby of the Mental Health Center. Sometimes it's hard to find this kind of money, one-time grant, 42,6765.20, and then we also have a almost $8,000 fiscal post fee that we received, so a total of just over $50,000. Term, January 1st of '23 through March 31st of '24. Support of housing, next section, Hearth Connections. Much like the sheriff presented, this one doesn't have any money attached to it, but we are extending our agreement with Hearth for the comprehensive housing contract, which relates to the housing trust fund. There's a lot of layers to our housing projects and this one does not include any changes to the HUD part of that, but it does realign our language. And let's see, the effect will be, the date of effect would be October 1st of '23, reviewed annually or more if required or desired. Next section is our management information systems within our human services umbrella. Next chapter is technology, is a vendor that we've used for many years. They have now offered a portal, which really offers self-service to the people that receive the care, so they're able to look up much like an electronic medical record, their status. It helps with timely submissions and documentation. It intelligently routes documents and provides reminders and automation to the benefit process, so everything's, you know, kind of sped up in one place. There is a one-time purchase fee of $45,000, which we pay in two installments, and then the first year, 2024, is $15,750 for the annual support, and then there's a 5% increase over the next two years through '26. We did, we do have unwinding grant funds from DHS, so we can use those funds to pay for this, those two pieces. The ongoing costs, I think it does say that, but goes to our, our budget into the future, but some of those initial heavier costs can be covered by this grant. Term is September 15th of '23 and automatically renewing each year. Couple of items under public health. Public health emergency preparedness, also known as FEP, and this is a renewal grant in order to maintain our operations, to respond to, public health emergencies are part of a public health, of emergency response. We build capacity and readiness for our staff and network with the community and helps support our ongoing programming into the future. Current grant is $40,110, which represents less than a 1% decrease from last year's funding. Term, July 1st of '23 through June 30th of '24. Also under public health, Minnesota Department of Health, hepatitis B. This is not a big grant, but an important one. It provides vaccines to infants whose mothers have been diagnosed with Hep B during pregnancy. We can do case management and follow along for 28 weeks into gestation. And public health then also does contact tracing to see if anybody else has been exposed or there's any other, other concerns, casting a wider net. This is a renewal. There's an itemized schedule of activities that is how we get paid and so that's per case and per service provided. The term is October 1st, '23 through September 30th, '28. And finally, an appointment to our mental health task force, David Johnson. He is a member of our Second Step Clubhouse, act as a consumer rep for the regional management team and is a resident of Blue Earth County District 4. Those are my action items for today, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
All right. For a motion?
Action item.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? I'm interested on the public health emergency preparedness and it says that it was reduced by less than 1%.
Right.
Which makes it sound good, except that cost went up.
Absolutely.
Much higher, so we actually got a real reduction in the grant.
For sure.
It cost the county more because the state's not paying their way.
For sure. That's, that's the math. That's correct, Mr. Chair.
All right. Just had to make that a point.
Well, and, and just alone, you know, we always look at just our staffing costs and trying to be competitive in the workforce and how much those have gone up and it creates a significant hole in our budget. Absolutely.
Unfunded, man.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any, any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And oppose the same? Thank you very much. And we have some informational discussion items for you.
We do, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, we have two areas just to look at. They're, they're very straightforward and I think they're fairly familiar to the board, but it's really important. I mean, they are, last year, we close out the year and present on last year's data year over year. So 2022, the first one about out-of-home placement, a lot of this, and Anne provided some notes at the end that I won't go through just, just to kind of give perspective, but the pie charts are pretty clear that our parental drug and alcohol use combined with abuse and neglect are the lion's share of what happens for any child entering into out-of-home placement. So although we have some kids that are very difficult to serve, which is kind of that third category of behavior and disability, you know, by far, the issue starts with our parents and especially with chemicals. And so that has not changed, but we're certainly trying to get ahead of that. When we can't, we want to make sure we're protecting children. One of the ways we can do that is by getting them to a safe place and getting their feet back underneath them. I've done this work for a lot of years and the transition back then to the home is always difficult, so it's not a, it's not a magic wand for out-of-home placement, but it is a safety issue. Placement expenditures, you can see are, are fairly straightforward again and consistent year over year. Foster care being the highest and then correctional facilities also are utilization there. Bob and I have talked about for years, the residential treatment percentage is not a lot, but the cost for some of our care, especially when we talk about our bed placement crisis, going out of state can be very expensive. And then exits out of, out of home placement, the largest one is to another guardian or another person, most often a relative, and then also back to the parent to reestablish the family, which is what we'd always prefer. That's, that's kind of our job one, but we also rely heavily on, on family and kinship care, which helps us a ton, and then adoptions are part of that as well. It's the last graphic, just 59% were placed with relatives or kin and that, again, if we cannot reunify, that would be our next best option.
How is that, Phil, compared to other counties? Who just seems like a good number?
Yeah, it's a really good question. I think it is. I think we put a lot of emphasis on that. They do have all of that. We have lots of dashboard with a lot of statistics. I don't have it off, I may, Commissioner. But, yeah, I think we compare favorably, for sure, because we, we really do search, we're required to do a full family search because sometimes kin is out of state, but they're willing to take a child, and that just is such a better transition than, you know, just somebody they don't know at all. And so, you know, we've done specialized training this last year with our whole staff, front desk, all the way through on trauma, and it's very traumatic for that child. I mean, we are trying to provide safety to them, that's our goal, and it's a good goal, but it is traumatic. It does, does affect them greatly, so if they go with aunt or uncle or grandma or grandpa, that's a much better transition than just, they get that the message is my parents aren't able to care for me and it's, it's a really tough reality check. On the other slide here, or series of slides, is similar, pretty straightforward, about child protection data, which can be related to out-of-home placement, but out-of-home placement's much wider than our child protection work. No surprise to the board that neglect is the highest category again, followed by physical abuse, and sometimes that, sexual abuse can vary, just one or two cases can really affect that. Once we get down on the list, neglect always being the most representative of what we're about. And, and I think all of those are very significant to look at regardless of the percentages when any kind of maltreatment happens. The interventions, this, again, for the board, most of you are aware, we have a family assessment, which is more coming alongside the family, and then we have family investigation, which is much more of, of, you know, kind of court-ordered. The degree of the concerns are so high that we have to involve Pat and his staff, and so those are different pathways that we have. Most often, we try to come alongside families using family assessment, but any time that the circumstance, or once we get into the case, we realize we really need more leverage and more of a court-ordered plan, that's when we go family investigation. And we can flip back and forth between those two strategies. The facility investigation, state, there's a whole spreadsheet that Anne gave me that when we are doing the investigation versus when the state does. So some facilities are investigated if there's a maltreatment report by the state and then some are investigated by us, but it is something you kind of have to look at, which I can certainly share with the board about when do we get involved in our primary and when are we secondary? Even when we're primary, we still share it with the state, but we have some of that responsibility, which is represented by the seven number in this graphic. And then finally, 98% of all child victims were seen by child protective, protective staff within the required timelines. If it's a family assessment, we have 120 hours to make the contact. If it's more immediate and concerning, 24 hours, and we've hit that mark pretty well. I do feel like, just to support the staff, that there's times where we cannot find the family and so the 2% is really that also. We, we, there's no kind of quote excuses, you just have to go try and there's times where we can't find them. And so I think, you know, it's closer to 100% effort and 98% success, so.
Not bad.
Not a bad number, right?
Not bad.
That's really all I had for you all today. Thank you for the chance to share it with me.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Nice job yesterday.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
You sounded really good yesterday.
That meant a lot to us and staff. It's such a collaborative effort and so certainly the sheriff being there, Pat being part, so much a part of what we're doing, and then the county board for many years now being very supportive of the yellow lines, so thank you for that.
We appreciate that.
Yeah.
My apologies to that Romanus on Energy Board yesterday as well.
I, I appreciate that, Commissioner, and I think the nice thing about yesterday that I always wish everyone could be there is that it was such a picture of our community and you're a big part of that, but we do have round two coming at AMC, so I hope that we can see you there, Commissioner Pat.
There we go.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you very much. And I believe we got minutes next?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. The county board minutes for September 12.
Move the purple.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose the same? And that passes.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And oppose the same? That passes.
Commissioner and Commissioners, item number 16 in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Just have informational items for the board today. Now, we did have a resignation of an eligibility specialist in our Human Services Department. Now, we did have a resignation of an eligibility specialist in our Human Services Department, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also had a resignation of a probation officer one, and then also a resignation of a probation officer two in our Community Corrections Department, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill both of those positions. We have employed a new probation officer one, so that individual started yesterday. And then we've also filled the Human Service Supervisor in Public Health Programs and Planning, and that individual also started yesterday. Then we had a resignation of a nine-one-one telecommunicator in our Sheriff's Department and initiated recruitment to refill that position. Excuse me, and then lastly, we had a resignation of a social worker and choices assessor in our Human Services Department and have initiated recruitment to refill that position. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of those human resource items.
Go ahead.
Any questions? Item number seventeen in your packet is a memo requesting authorization to designate depositories. We have received notification from a payee that we're eligible for a dividend payment. Now, don't get excited, it's for five dollars. So here we are, you know, having to do some work to get five dollars, but we've historically received that dividend payment through a check, but the payee is indicating that they want to do electronic transfer, which we certainly support, and so they need a formal designation from the board allowing us to receive those funds. So recommending authorizing our finance director to conduct these financial transactions on behalf of the county.
So move. Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same, and that passes.
Thank you. In your packet, at tab eighteen, is a resolution that's required by Minnesota statute certifying the proposed twenty-twenty-four property tax levy. Blue Earth County staff began working on the budget in April of this year. We had meetings with department heads that were held in June, and work sessions with the commissioners occurred throughout the summer, resulting in a proposed levy of forty-five million one hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. This proposed levy is a five percent increase over the levy that was assessed in twenty-twenty-three. Residential property owners will likely see the county portion of their property tax be relatively flat compared to this year's tax bill. The same will likely be true for our commercial industrial properties. On the other side, agricultural and apartment property owners will likely see increases in the ten to thirty-eight percent due to increasing valuations of those properties. We are appreciative of the Minnesota Legislature for providing some increased state aids to keep this levy recommendation lower than it would have been without those aids. We are still seeing increased pressures on wages due to the challenging labor market. We also are seeing service demands that are leading to increased staffing needs, as well as inflationary impacts on operational costs, which have all led to this level of levy that's being requested. At this time, I'm recommending the twenty-twenty-four proposed property tax levy of forty-five million one hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars be certified to the Blue Earth County Finance Director.
I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, Bob summarized it very well with the extensive work that went into getting this budget put together, and appreciate all the help from the staff and efforts of the department heads and all the work they've done also.
Agreed. People don't know we'd start working on this in spring before it comes to this point.
Yeah.
A lot of time and energy has been put into it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose the same, and that passes. Now we get to our proposed budget.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. Item number nineteen in the packet is the twenty-twenty-four proposed budget. Minnesota Statute three seventy-five A point zero six requires the county administrator to prepare and submit an annual budget and a long-range capital expenditure program to the county board. As I mentioned previously, staff have been working on the proposed budget since April this year, and it has been reviewed numerous times in work sessions with the county board. As such, I'm recommending approval of a resolution regarding the twenty-twenty-four proposed budget, which projects expenditures at one hundred and twenty-five million eight hundred and seventy-one thousand eighteen dollars. I would also point out that the public hearing to discuss the budget will be held on December twelfth of this year at six P.M. here at the historic courthouse.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same, and that passes. All right. And it looks like that was the end of it.
That's all I have for you, Mr. Chair.
All right. We will move to our commissioner reports. Mark, can you get us started today?
December twelfth, MICA meeting, and talked about membership, where we're at. And then September nineteenth, did have Airport Commission, dealing with, you know, getting a tower and everything, finally. September twentieth, did have a MV, the Minnesota Valley Council of Governments meeting, and that was kind of long because, well, we had a tour of the drummer, you know, the whole complex, drummer, hockey and all. That's quite, that's quite nice. And then we did get into the Personal Leave Act that was passed, and let's just say that's a little challenging for the local governments and same with the colony. Yeah, anyway, I'll leave it at that. It was quite an extensive conversation. Then September twenty-second, did have All Seasons Arena, meeting in the morning, and then on the twenty-fifth, did have a yellow, was it a yellow line project, yeah, on the twenty-fifth. And that, that covers mine. Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Kevin. I actually had a pretty late last couple of weeks, so what I had for committee meetings was my MVAC meeting, and we had a good turnout. Everything's going really well up there. Got the new roof put on the building and just finished up getting solar panels put back on it, and they're doing really well with the thrift stores, both of them. New Ulm was about ready to go broke about nine months ago, and we got the manager over there and helped turn it around, and they're going to show a profit this year of about thirty to fifty thousand dollars, so.
Wow.
Pretty exciting, because I.
What a difference a good manager makes, huh?
Yeah, yeah, and they were really, they were really worried about losing that over in the New Ulm area. I know when Charles Gugisberg was on there, every time we brought up closing, wanted for MRCI, he would shut that down right away, because it's important to the community, and that one's still going also, so. And then I was at the Township Officers Meeting. Kentise spoke about the farm market and the farm economy here in Blue Earth County. It was very interesting, and Eric Waller was there, talked a little bit about his role as emergency manager on behalf of the sheriff. And then several ditch meetings and some road issues, and of course, always planning and zoning issues.
Sounds like you were actually pretty busy.
Yeah, there's plenty to do, but yes.
All right. Kevin?
Since our September twelfth, last board meeting, attended the AMC Policy Conference on the thirteenth and the fifteenth, including the Minnesota Rural Counties Meeting, and then Environmental Patch and Resources Policy Committee met for two days. On the twentieth, had the opportunity to give the welcome and interact with all the I.T. directors. Blue Earth County hosted their statewide annual conference, so that was a, I've never been in a room with that many I.T. people in one time, so I, lots, lots of answers to my questions. Twenty-first, I participated in the first NACO EMS, Emergency Medical Services Work Group. I've been asked to, to sit on that as we're looking at some of the challenges of specifically rural ambulance services and, and some of that sustainability. And then that evening, as Commissioner Brunder indicated, was a township quarterly meeting. September twenty-second, participated both in the sewer, one watershed, one planned policy committee, as well as the Gavurba Policy Committee met. And then yesterday, the twenty-fifth, PACE and the Rural Minnesota Energy Board had our meetings in Slaton. Lot of discussion, not only renewable energy, but also landfill liners, the waste energy importance and things like that, as we are looking at less and less room in the landfills across the state. That completes my report.
Thank you. Patty?
After the last board meeting, I too attended the AMC Fall Policy Conference, so that was my first, and it was Health and Human Services Committee, I'm on it. Bit overwhelming for me, but it was good. Monday, the eighteenth, I had my BAGA meeting with NACO. On the nineteenth, the NACO Regional Call. Twenty-fifth, I did the Yellow Line Report, and that's the end of my report.
And for myself, after our September twelfth meeting, I went up to the AMC Fall Policy, where we had our AMC Board of Directors, also attended the Minnesota Rural Counties Caucus meeting, interesting talks there. I attended transportation policy during the week. It was a good, good policy conference, I felt. And the next week, I had the Minnesota Transportation Alliance fly-in that I, that I went to in Washington, D.C. Were able to talk with Senators Smith, Senators Klobuchar, and then Representative Finstead, all along with listening to a lot of other representatives from across the state of Minnesota. Yesterday, I attended the Yellow Line Project, which really makes me feel really, really good about Blue Earth County and what we've done for stuff like that. And that'd be the end of mine. Ask for a recess?
So move. Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the same, and we are recessed.